All this meeting in order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, open forum, would anybody like to speak? Okay. I just want to bring some attention to Tuesday night's storm that we had here in Melrose. And just wanna say thank you to everybody involved, our police department, fire department, public utilities, street crews especially. I think we, as the firefighters, were out there 10 minutes and we seen you guys out there already, so you guys rushed to action, to commend you and your group. And also want to commend a lot of people the last, yesterday and today. I know there was one person who rented a wood chipper himself and a group of people went driving around helping other neighbors out. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been helpful in this process. And hours will get through this and we stronger for it. So I just want to thank everybody for all they've done. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, four consent agenda. Approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, MMU, safety program contract, office assistant one step increase and office assistant two step increase. Those are gambling resolution for Midwest Outdoors, Unlimited, Wobegon Partners. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, first and second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, reports, police department, let me report, Chief Mouse.
Good evening. Our report for August 2017, our traffic area, 15 citations were issued, 70 per warnings and 11 rip warnings. We had up to 348 calls requesting for service for the last month and last year at this time, we had 415. We ended on I-2307 and last year's 2748, so we're down 441 calls for the year and 31 calls, excuse me, for the month, 31 ABC assists. Those were backed up, last month we had a low month, so it seems to come back to normal again. Some things that are moving ahead forward, we had talked about signs for the school bus areas this year, for this year with the new fines and changes. Gary and I awarded those signs, we've got at least one area that we have placement for them and we'll consider other areas after we get these posted and see if they're effective or not. Speed signs have come in, that was gonna be on our agenda for this week, but then Gary left me hanging and went and did other things, so. Only other thing that the police department has coming up for that we want to highlight is October 4th, is Walk to School Day. There's gonna be some things coming out in the public school and for St. Mary's as far as how that's all gonna work, but there'll be kids on foot that morning from the soccer park to the public school into St. Mary's school and this will be working with us on that, so just an extra idea for that morning that there's gonna be a little bit of change. Any questions?
Excellent. Chief. City attorney request, Scott?
My report is here, a couple of items that we have coming up on the agenda later. The portable storage unit ordinance that was brought to the council last month and we made some changes and are, got that back on the agenda for you to consider. Question came up about special assessments and when they're deferred and again, that will show up later in the agenda. We'll talk about that in more detail. And then finally, the nuisance enforcement. You also have a question about enforcement of housing code violations as a form of nuisance. The nuisances that I'm referring to here is to give you a heads up. Next month, I would expect that we will have additional hearings and ask for orders directing people to clean up the property. So the ones that I'm referring to here mostly to let you know it's coming are properties that need to be cleaned up similar to what we've done in the past. When I wrote the report, as mentioned, that there's three. I've been talking with Chief Mouse this evening, he says that it's down to two. And I had asked him, well, how many nuisance problems did you find with your sweep this year? And he was saying about 105. And so out of those 105, we've got two that we're asking you to look at and take action on next month. So I think it sounds like the program's working pretty good. Any questions on what I've got? Except I mean, most of these things we'll talk about more to do later in the meeting. Thank you.
All right, Scott. All right, around the action items. Resolution number 2017-54, decertifying tax increment financing, district number 2-3, genuine foods.
Yeah, this was a project that was put into place in 1993, if I'm not mistaken, that was intended to provide an incentive to allow them to expand and pull up their current facilities that they have in downtown. It's been 25 years since its establishment. The terms as outlined in the development agreement has now expired and there is no additional funds remaining in that account, meaning that all the increment that was generated hasn't been able to go back to the property owners. So therefore, the city council has to take formal action to decertify that and enclose that as per Minnesota state law. So the action is to take, to approve the resolution as presented and to decertify the TIF district.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second person. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, action 9 and B, Shaggy's Towing Plaid, resolution number 2017-56, resolution approving case number 2017-201, application from Shaggy's Towing to allow creation of a plaid. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm planning a zoning meeting on September 11th, 2017. The commission did hold a public hearing and recommended to the council that the preliminary and final plaid be approved. The application was received from Shaggy's Towing. They had the surveyor come out, I did the preliminary plaid check, everything, all easements and everything meet our subdivision code, so the action would be that the council would consider approving order 9, CMS addition plaid.
All right, any discussion?
Do you think anybody have any issues with that preliminary line? I don't have a lot of concern about the cop plan, well, not a fit in with the cop plan because going back, being part of it was 10 years ago. Thought or remember that that would be desirable for multi-family, multi-family residential expansion, but Mike said you're muted. Says Fitz cop plans.
Yep.
Good, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, C, deferred assessment.
Mr. Mayor, we had a family back in 2006 request a deferment due to financial hardships for a special assessment. That was a 10-year deferment. The family is asking for a deferment again until such time that their finances allow them to do that. There's certain criteria that allows people to do this. One, under state law, one being age 65 and older, meeting certain income limits in comparison to the asset amount due. So it has to be less than, I think, 9% of your annual income, which is very similar to the ACA Affordable Care Act type standards that you've heard about. We also have, the person must be retired or be permanently disabled or a member of the National Guard or military serving on orders during that time. The family has filled out the appropriate paperwork, staff has reviewed this and find it to be in compliance with Minnesota state law and would recommend to approve as presented.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, D, you want to go over that one?
Yeah, this is very similar, this is more of an administrative action relating to the tax increment, relating to the redevelopment of the 400 block. In an effort to close this file and to get the transcripts onto the city, we asked Ryan Consulting to help us with the certification request with the county. We had a couple of issues that were needed to get clarified with evaluation on the properties and the state auditor's office noticed that this was actual request and therefore we had to change some dates. Upon the discretion of these alternatives, it was agreed that for all parties that we would simply decertify and then recertify the district to stay in compliance with these rules. So therefore, it's staff's recommendation to pass these, the two resolutions, the resolutions as presented to recertify these TIF districts and then to decertify them, so.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. First and second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, E, how is in code ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have the chief come up and talk about this, but really what boils down to is regards to the abatement. We're getting to the point where we have abatement for shingles as well as siding. And the question has come up in regards to how do you actually do that? Do you contract staff to actually hop up on these roofs and to, you know, reshingle the roofs and then assess the property owners? That's the only course of action that we have at this time. Staff has talked about this, staff has also looked at other cities, at other cities, and we can't find anyone that takes it to that level unless it's a health hazard where there's like a hole in the roof. But in this situation, we can't confirm or deny that there's leaking in the roof. It's based on an aesthetic view of what the roof looks like. And we strongly recommend that people do this and we go through the processes. So really what the question is before the council tonight is, is how do you want to abate this if at all? And if the question is if at all, then we would need to take action accordingly to amend our ordinances to affect that or not to take action. I'll turn it over to the chief to provide any additional input and then I can share with you what Josh T-Shaper had to say, councilman T-Shaper had to say as well.
Yeah, I believe my summary is pretty well is that, you know, this process has been in place since early 2000. It's only 2000, we got adopted at the same time as the nuisance ordinance died. The only change to it is recently we modified the ordinance to allow it to follow the nuisance violations, pictures, whatever else, and then go through a court process to abate the issue. Some of the questions that have come up and we've talked with Dan Mark, all are about this as well is, at this point, it's based on my determination that this is a bad roof. Is it leaking interior? We don't know unless we talk to the homeowner. Is, when we talk with the homeowner, we deliver the pictures, well, one does look near as bad as that one might. Why haven't we been doing those sorts of things? So there is some concern that, A, I'm the sole decision or the sole party that decides, yeah, if that one's bad or not bad enough for the story is. One thing we did change when I took over is letting people know in advance that, A, you know, your shingles started to curl, these are becoming an issue. Probably in the next two to three years, this is gonna become an action item as opposed to something we've worked on today. So that has helped with some folks, they realize that they need to put some money away for the shingles down the road and that's helped with some of them come through. The concern is amongst staff and myself as well as the cop and Mark collars, does the city want to get into the business of financing and completing shingle jobs, siding, paint or whatever the story is, and then finding a way to receive that money back, whether it's through special assessments, outright building, whatever it is. And that's where the issue comes down to is a good number of these folks have financial limitations and that's why they haven't done the jobs. We did look into some grant programs, Patty Hozie funds, Michael O'Mon funds, some. A lot of them pertain though to people that are either retired or meet a certain age limit and most of these folks don't follow into the age limits or those income levels, so they don't qualify for these programs to receive either very low interest rates or 0% interest on these loans. So there are programs out there, just unfortunately, these houses or these folks don't follow any of those. So what we're looking for is, if the council wants to, we will follow through with the continued abatement process and we'll work on what we need to do, whether it's city staff that goes out and takes care of the shingle issues or whether we contract that out and then the financial department falls on the bad side or if it's something that needs to be reviewed a bit longer or maybe just abolished altogether just because of some of the concerns we brought up here or that is something that maybe we should do. There was a discussion about talking with insurance companies through these mortgage, mortgage companies as well that maybe insurance company reports the issue, but there's limited information, we can get it from some of that to push issue as well. I agree with the aesthetics portion of it. I don't believe at this point that any of those leaks roofing, but we don't go into it, I'll still prove it with that, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Josh Alderman T-Shaper is not able to make the meeting tonight. He did share with me that he has concerns about enforcement of shingling, specifically the abatement of that. He still feels that there, it's appropriate, appropriate fines as we've talked about in the past, but to the point where we actually go to the point where we have to mitigate it and abate it, it's a little hard to swallow, he said. So same thing for siding was his same comment.
I honestly was not. Well, I thought we just went through that work process and giving a heads up and stuff, but I didn't know that we had that on the process of the debate, so.
We can't, and that's what the council, that's what the question is.
Right, and so I guess I would be, in my opinion, I'm more, I don't mind the knock on the door, your paint looks bad, shingles are gonna need replacing, being proactive about is good. But to actually go on a private property and get on somebody else's roof and say, doesn't matter what you think, that's, I think, overstepping, so.
Justin?
I agree. Maybe without it, it's a liability at times, it's tough to get out of there.
Yeah, same thing here, I agree with that. It's not our job.
Brad, did you want to say something first and second?
So, Mr. Consulars, that you do have options, it's just that they're not very good options. We added the abatement as an option that we didn't have before. Yet before that, the option was to let Mr. Mayor tag, tell him to fix the roof or go to jail. That didn't seem appropriate. So, you know, in the roofing, in painting, you know, abatement is an option. You don't have to order abatement when you see the violation. You can notify them of the problem, as you'll see, I mean, you could put it on payables list and where if you see the infraction, they, you can give them fine and tell them to think it up and call it good, which would just stay within the city of Melrose and get filed these charges. You know, so I think mostly for staff, they need direction, it's how hard do you want to push as a matter of policy. I don't think we want to take that tool off the table because if I'm thinking about where this is situated, you know, in the housing code, when we adopt the housing code, we gotta apply it to all the houses, but within the code, there's also a language that addresses rental housing. And so we've got more leverage with them, you know, if they're not painting and keeping it up, you know, they've got a license at stake for the homeowner that just doesn't have the money for a new roof. Yeah, I mean, what's the approach? Do you just, you know, keep encouraging them to do something? But like I said, the abatement is, you know, that's a enforcement option, it's a choice that for staff, we just want to, you know, is that a good idea to pursue that in all cases? It's fairly straightforward, when we got a messy lot and the guy doesn't pick it up, you know, we go out and not a truck and all the way, it's that simple. But like I said, we don't think anybody feels comfortable buying somebody a new roof, trying to collect it from the cost.
I would agree, you know, or you might not, I would be more wanting to enforce on the rental properties. You know, if you have some of these landlords that don't care what they're gonna charge top rent, I don't like that. I see that in my neighborhood and I don't like that because you're not gonna get potentially a clientele that's gonna even care about the property and they're gonna make it even worse. You know, I know the one neighbor, there's chunks of paint and they're flying through the neighborhood and rolling all that paint is probably pre-70s and lead gase paint. Then it's considered a health hazard. Or am I wrong?
It's pre-70s, you're probably, yeah, it's, you know, buddy, that's, you know, one of the reasons we drafted the housing code was because, and it's been a number of years ago now, is we were having problems with rental properties and properties going downhill. And so we adopted the housing code and a system of requiring licenses so that these properties can be inspected from time to time and have to be re-licensed and had some leverage to get, you know, the owner to fix it up that he's gonna be in business and not let the property come out. But like I said, it's gotta apply to everybody. If it's the homeowner, you know, it's hard, we don't have a license we can pull and if they really don't have the money.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just attempt to summarize there is that what I believe Scott's saying is that he would recommend that, and I think staff would concur with this, that the ordinance would stay as is, where is, but when it comes time to enforcement of the abatement issue, that we would have to look at alternative options versus this abatement of actually restoring the property to its initial status. Is that correct, Scott and Mike?
I think so, I, I.
Does the abatement way that the regulation reads today, does it have to come before the council, before that gets enacted?
Yes.
Yes.
Does there have to be a public hearing?
Yes.
Or does, okay.
And that, that's the same process is that the first step is they get notified from Craig that they've got a violation and, you know, they need to fix it. And if they don't apply, then we have a public hearing and, you know, we'll present what we think is wrong and what needs to be done to fix it. Property owner has the opportunity to come and speak to you, you know, tell you their side. And then the council ultimately decides to issue the order to abate it or not abate it. And if they don't follow your order, then we go and force, we're hoping and we're going forward to force your order.
My only thought is if, you know, it's one thing to have junk cars sitting in your yard. Does it, do we want to appear that way? I know it sounds like there's more teeth in the ordinance and everything, but is it, is it sending a wrong message to say, hey, driven our community violence and your shingles get to old? Here, we're gonna take your floor. Now, is that, is that the community you want to be perceived as? And I think that kind of, you know, not that any of us would maybe even want to go through the abatement process with someone enforcing that, but we, I think the question boils down to, do we want that on the blocks as that? You know, perception is, what do they say, perception is not Tesla. It's a good old saying, but I don't know. I mean, I, I can still see the point of, in my mind, I'm trying to think of when would we ever actually look at somebody's property and go, yeah, we're gonna force you to put a new roof on your house.
I think you would have to reach the point where it was a hazard, creating a hazard.
Right.
I, well, you, I don't think we would really do it, but I don't want to leave the option for future councils to not be able to take action if they really think they need to do it.
When you go in and talk to, you talk to the homeowners and say the shingles are bad, or they, you go in there a second time, you know, you gotta, did that? Do you ever say, do you ever go in there and say, how can we get this taken care of? Have you got any suggestions on how we can get this taken care of? Do you get answers or?
Most folks are looking for a grant program or looking for a financial option.
So they don't get the money?
No, you know, the, the folks that can't afford it, well, they may not have had a plan that year or the next year, but they go, no, I, I see you looking at the pictures, yep, I didn't look at my cell side because I don't enter my house from that side, I get it, you know, we'll get working on it. And that's where the, the help is coming as far as giving the notices in advance. You got a year or two, but you start thinking about it, kind of thing.
Well, I'm, I'm a victim of that myself, because I remember you guys all were laughing, who had to give me the notice that one year. I mean, it was like the first year I got on the council. And to me, I didn't realize my shingles were that fat. And that's where I was and it was like, had a baby on the way, I'm like, what can we do? Can you, you guys work with me? And like you said, well, sometimes you don't realize they're that bad. Huh, you get a new, you know, someone else points out that you see it, so.
And if they're making a good faith and effort, we go, like Joe just said, you know, that year wasn't the year for him, but he knew that, okay, yeah, this next year we go soon. And that's what, for a lot of folks, I get where you're coming from off here. Can you give me a year to put some money? And the lumberyard, they were here and Tom's been really good about taking down payments from people and kind of building up that nest egg for them so that they, at some point, they'll have that whole estimated value set aside to come up and start to move.
Boy, and they actually, Kramer Lumber was really good that time with me because they found warranties because there was a faulty shingle and they were able to process paperwork for me, so. There's a lot of positives to us of these visiting.
And to add on to Craig and also to launch off of what Mike Creelman's doing in the community development department is we are actively applying for a community development block grant. And if those funds are awarded next year, we would be able to help some of these families, but it all depends on where the districts and zones are when this all shakes out. But it's a tool that we're trying to help to subsidize those unique situations.
If the only thing I would suggest, I haven't looked at what your payables list is and, you know, would you want to, if you would want to consider putting violations of the ordinance, the housing ordinance on the payables list. There's no criminal penalty, they're just being told and again, that doesn't mean Craig can't talk to them. And if they say, yeah, give me a year or two. And if they say, yeah, give me a year or two, you know, if a year or two goes by, if they do nothing, at least he could, you know, get them fined and kind of help along a little bit. I don't know if it'd be still, uh, jump in and pay for his roof and try to assess it. Back against it. But it would be another tool for Craig. If it looks like people are just stringing it along and aren't doing anything that's really clear.
All right. Is there any other discussion or...? In a sense, if we take no action, it just sort of gives us the leeway to do as we feel.
Case by case, right?
Case by case, please. What you're looking at is getting this discussion there. I guess there are probably some case workings anyway. Derek?
Yeah. If we can, if we can get some grant money, that'd be great. Like you say, the city doesn't want to get into financing projects like this. So I understand that. Hopefully we can come up with some dollars to help some of these people out. I don't know if there's such a thing as putting it out there. You know, would these people be interested in asking for help? Is there any volunteer groups that would be interested in coming around to help paint this house? You know, you supply the paint, we'll come paint your houses, groups and stuff like that. I know around, but whether they want to be included in on that, I don't know.
And there was those conversations with some folks too, that, you know, would, if you can afford the materials, if we find the people?
Yeah.
Can that happen? There were some people that were willing to do that a few years ago. And whether it was pride or what, or whether, like I said, paint is okay.
Yeah.
You can buy several gallons of paint and still make it through, but...
The shingles is a different liability.
Right.
I understand.
All right, is there a consensus? Right here with Max Paul. All right. All right, Melrose Area Relief Fund.
This is an interesting conversation to have tonight due to the natural event that we had here earlier this week. A little over a year ago, when the fire in the downtown occurred, the community really came together and through the foundations as well as private philanthropic contributions, we raised nearly a hundred and forty thousand dollars to help these families and businesses that were affected by the fire. It was really kicked off by the Women of Today and Father Mitch from the Catholics or the Ministers, Ministers Area, excuse me, the Melrose Area Clergy Organization as well. They really got together and raised some funds. The creation of that, we then created a, an organization called the Melrose Area Relief Fund, which was created to temporarily administer these funds and to make sure that it got coordinated properly. That has now come to an end. There is approximately fourteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars in the fund remaining. And through a lot of consideration by talking to the Initiative Foundation as well as the Melrose Area Clergy as well as legal counsel in regards to how can we handle these funds? And we're recommending that this fund, the Melrose Area Relief Board formally, yeah, close out. But then to return those funds to the Women of Today. To be, and then, but the City of Melrose would serve as the financial fiduciary for that. Meaning that our Finance Director, Tessa Morning, would account for it, administer the funds when a request were to come in, just like we're doing for the Yellow Bike Program, just like we're doing for the Seager Center. It's, we're just a conduit. It takes off the burden of accounting and budgeting within these various organizations that just don't have this professional staff to do that. It was a unanimous decision of the Relief Fund to do this. We've approached the Ministers Area Council and talked to them about that. We've also made a presentation last night, excuse me, two nights ago, to the Women of Today. And they've all agreed to participate and to take the lead. So when there's a natural disaster or a fire, these families could then make a request to this organization who would then tell the city to write a check out for fifteen hundred dollars or whatever they feel would be appropriate. And so that's what the recommendation is. It's kind of completing the circle for this entire event. Also empowering the local organizations too to continue on their efforts with leading these tough situations. So what we'd be looking for is the council provide consideration to allow the city to be a fiduciary for this, for this fund.
Is there any discussion they could be adding to this?
They sure could. They could if there was other contributions that would come, say, for example, this windstorm. If somebody wanted to make donations, they could donate it to the city, it would go into this fund. And then this group could then provide... But we did put a couple of restrictions on this. The group did, one, it had to be within the Melrose Area School District, seven forty. Two, as well as the maximum contribution that any one family or business could receive would be fifteen hundred dollars. Under this scenario, we would be able to get about nine point eight families or businesses assistance. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised if these funds could be used maybe with this last windstorm that we had.
So is this a tax, a non-profit type of fund?
Right, yeah.
And who maintains that status?
The Women of Today would be technically maintaining that status because they are the five oh one C three, but the city would still be the fiduciary for that.
Okay, Women of Today, so they are currently administering?
No.
No, so this is just basically one, two of Women of Today.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anybody else that...?
We've talked to a couple other different organizations about doing this. But based upon where these funds came from originally and them being in the original, you know, the people that jumped right in, it makes sense. And they also felt very appreciated that they were thought of from this relief organization to take the lead on this. Or, and it's really not going to be all that active. We don't anticipate being natural disasters and significant fires within the school district area. So we would hope.
All right. Any motion to approve?
So move.
Can you get a second?
A second.
All right, Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carrying. Resolution number twenty seventeen dash fifty-five. Resolution adopting proposed tax levy, approving the two thousand seventeen tax levy, electable in two thousand eighteen, and setting hearing dates. Tessa?
Tax levy. Um, in August, we met as a working group to discuss the two thousand eighteen budget and went over it in detail. Tonight, we have to approve the tax levy. It needs to be certified to the county by the end of the month. And with our final levy certification then in December. We are proposing a preliminary tax levy at nine hundred and seventy-five thousand for our general levy and a combined debt levy at four hundred and fifty thousand. So that would bring the total to one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we're estimating the tax capacity rate to be seventy point seven seven percent. And that proposed tax rate is a decrease from our final levy rate of seventy point nine rate for two thousand seventeen. And then with this, we also have to certify to the county when we will do our truth in taxation presentation to the public. So with that, we're looking at December fourteenth that are contemplating at six P M. So we'll go over in detail then our budget and our levy.
Yeah, no, Craig, if I'm not wrong, this is not the final.
This is not the final.
But it can go up after this.
It can go up. So what we propose today, yep, we can change that and we often do in December. This just gives us, we usually propose a little higher so that since with our budget now, so many things are still up in the air, but we cannot go any higher than this.
Any questions or concerns? Pretty good? Take action on the closed resolution? Can you get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
With motion carried, second for the action, the council take action to approve the preliminary two thousand eighteen budget. Can you get a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
With motion carried. Thank you. All right, V, Police Officer higher, full-time. Craig, Matt?
Yes, with the resignation of Officer Green, which was accepted at the August meeting and we weren't able to make it because of the council numbers, we are presenting again to the council to backfill that position. We do have internal candidates that are interested. Two, three part-timers show interest in full-time employment. Third part-timer has some consideration for it, but is in the middle of a move right now, so they don't want to make any commitment to send them in. They have full interest at this point anyway, so. Open it up to the council to take that under consideration for internal posting. And we do move forward and bring that to the octo where we get them. You sent us back, Craig?
All right. So the council to give consideration of proving, approve internal posting of the full-time officer. Is there any questions? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Full, motion carried. Thanks, Craig. All right, ordinance number nine twenty-one of seventeen. And ordinance about chapter one five four of the Melrose City Code Regulating Placement and Use Portable Storage Units.
All right, so at the August seventeenth council meeting, this ordinance was brought up to the council for approval. There were some questions and concerns about the ordinance and how it was written. So we tabled it that month and Scott, Demick City Attorney, and myself got back together and addressed those concerns as far as construction projects, structures that are allowed for those, as well as some enforcement issues. But as, as we went through, we got the draft put together. And so the actual being council to adopt the ordinance as, as written.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a conversation with Alderman T. Schaefer. He brought up three things he wanted me to bring to the, to the council tonight for consideration. One is that he would ask for consideration relating to the, the containers be located on the side properties versus the in front of the properties. He also brought up a concern about clarifying the difference between portable storage structures such as these shipping containers and a DOT semi-trailer that's no longer DOT certified. So he was concerned about that. He would ask that the, those issues be addressed, maybe at a planning commission or even at the staff level, and bring it back for that consideration. There's also comments I've heard from some other council members just in passing about residential versus commercial and industrial differences there. Those are other things that I heard that were brought up. So any questions? That's what I've heard from other council members, public.
Tony?
Yeah, no, definitely need something on the books. I also have reservations about industrials, specifically industrial. Because I know there's obviously a lot of trailers sitting on industrial property. I don't know how you'd regulate that, for starters.
Yeah, how would they, I mean, how can you move on a trailer? Even if it's got tires in it, so...
Well, if it's sort of, if it's licensed, then it would be, so. And that's what the challenge that, that Mr. Creelman has to deal with. And that's why we're trying to clarify this is when it comes to that, what's permissible and what's not. And we've had a couple of unique situations in the community. It's caused some frustrations with some neighbors and also some council members over the years. So that's what we're trying to do is resolve that. But based on what I'm hearing, I think it would probably be best to have another conversation with the, with the planning commission at an upcoming meeting to kind of work out some of these other challenges that have come up during this process.
Nick, did you have to say something?
Well, like the storage containers, is that linked to like the containers and semis? Is that basically, yeah, the two?
I'll have to defer to Mike on this one. I can answer, but I'll let Mike.
Yeah, as far as the, is it the ordinance with definitions for the, these portable storage units? There is a fairly lengthy definition, covers several different items. And then there's also a portion of the ordinance that's, you know, addresses the exempt type of storage containers. And in the, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the exemptions are, you know, semi-trailer that is functionable, you know, does have tires that are good. The, you know, if there's a reaper, it's functional, it's not taken out of there. And it's licensed, it's road ready and everything. So there is a lengthy definitions portion that basically address what is and what isn't.
Like the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, the one that are kind of in charge or presenting this to the council, did they, did they go talk to the people that have these containers and ask them, you know, why do you have their containers or, you know, is there...
As, as far as the commission members, I'm not sure. Myself, I've had several conversations with several of these property owners. In many cases, the, the main reason they have these storage containers, especially in industrial commerce properties, is because they needed someplace to store something. They don't, they don't necessarily have the funds to build a structure or they don't have the space to build a structure, those types of things. They're, you know, they're busy running a business, they're trying to improve their business and keep their customers happy. The last thing they're really worried about is building a construction so that they can store things. And several others are, you know, they, if the tractor trailers are broken down, they're not road ready, it's the fact that they don't necessarily know how to dispose of them or if they do, they just can't seem to find the time as of now. Several property owners in towns, especially commercial business owners, have been very good about having a discussion with me, discussing through, you know, how to mitigate some issues on the property. But the semi-trailers or the storage containers are just, it's a difficult one just because of what, what they do with them, you know, how do they get rid of them?
Have all the people been notified, you know, that have these storage containers, notified that they, that we're, you know, proposing this rules every year at this time?
Yes, earlier this year, I did send out a letter to all commercial property owners, commercial and industrial property owners. And in that letter, I just, I made a point of saying, you know, basically stating the ordinance and the nuisance violations that we see on a regular basis around town. And as, along with that, I also put in a line that said, or paragraph that said, portable storage ordinance that, you know, has these specific things is being talked about at the planning zoning commission level and will be brought to the council based, you know, if the planning zoning decide to recommend, the council will approve it.
So they're more concerned about the looks of the city as far as, is that why they want to control this? Is it the appearance of the storage containers or what's the primary reason?
Well, the primary reason that I believe would be where this came from was the several commercial properties in town, you know, they just, there was really no, I guess the, the main reason for it would be there was no real teeth to go after these broken down semi-trailers that might not be being used as storage. They're just not being moved or maintained by any means. And there's really nothing in our zoning codes or in our, in our city codes that kind of allows to address these. There's several things where we could go for the health and safety side of it. But when you're talking about semi-trailer, it's pretty difficult to, you know, get an argument based around that, so.
So is it the number of storage containers then? So when you say they have a lot of semi-trailers, is it the number? If they have one, that's okay, or two, that's okay, but if they have ten, that's not okay?
Well, I would, I don't think it's necessarily the number. I think it's just more of the, um...
Or it's really, it's really the ones.
Container or whatever. Yeah, it's really the ones that are just, they're worn out, broken down, semi-trailers and ask for road ready, you know.
Well, my question is, you know, you've talked to some of the people, but, you know, so passing rules and regulations so then we force them into it rather than trying to work with them. Is that what the planning and zoning is trying to do here? They, you know, we're going to force you to move these rather than say, you know, how can we work with you and can we, can you, you know, give us a timeframe on removal of these?
That question actually was not brought up to the planning zone. So that would, that would be a good thing to mention to the planning zoning and brought back to them.
And then my question, my next question would be then, so now we have these storage containers, we've got to control that now. And someone decides that now, you know, maybe these pallets itself out in front of someone's business, you know, that's an eyesore. So is the planning and zoning going to draw rules and regulations on that? No, but I, I mean, where do, where do we stop, you know? You know, we see pork in a cooler, you know, and that's, you know, that's, some people don't like that either, you know, so.
I think, I mean, I think it was brought up, was it brought up by you to the planning zoning originally? I can't remember how the topic came up.
It was, it was something that was brought up to me through a few complaints on, on a complaint basis. And because of that, I brought up the planning and zoning and said, this is what I've been hearing from a few people in the community. And, you know, I did a little research on, or a lot of research on these portable storage ordinances that are around the state. There are a few, me and Scott Demick started looking into it a little bit further. And yeah, then we brought up the planning and zoning, we kind of dove into it that way.
From, from my perspective, I guess the residential is obviously the primary concern. Nobody wants to see a shipping container. You know, cargo, any shipping container sitting in somebody's driveway for a year, a couple of years. I don't think the neighbors would appreciate that either. But what's the right level? I don't know.
Well, and I, I think that's, that's very true with the fact that as far as the residential side, the main reason that was in there is because we're trying to, rather than having people put these storage containers in their backyards or in their side yards, using them as accessory structures, you know, that type of thing. We're trying to make sure that we have the, the actual accessory structures, the, you know, hole mark or the, you know, garden sheds, that type of thing. Rather than dropping these pods that we may have seen around in different communities into their residential property or even on their driveways. And as far as the commercial and industrial, the planning and zoning did try to shy away or lessen the burden on commercial industrial because they, they do want to work with those property owners. Cause they do know several of the businesses use those for good reason. They don't just have them, just have them there. And that was where the part of the ordinance came in where they said, you, the commercial industrial properties can have them on their property. It would just have to be screened properly. Just, you know, to meet our some ordinances as written.
So there was a, there's a timeframe on some of this stuff, but that's not for the industrial and commercial property people? Like I said on the roll, there was a ninety day timeframe or permit?
For the residential properties.
That's just for residential, not for the industrial and, and commercial?
Yeah, we do the same thing for, we have a timeframe, time limit on writing away permits. We do that. If somebody's reshingling their house or reciting their house and they get a dumpster brought in, you can put it on the street and you just have a certain amount of time before that has to be picked up and removed. It's kind of the same idea for this would be, you can have a storage container in your, on your property, residential property, but you have, you have to come in, get an application and actually remove it at a certain time.
I've talked to a few people also on this issue and, you know, I, I know a few of them have mentioned the fact that, you know, they don't want the storage containers any more than anybody else, but at, at this point, the tax, taxes involved with putting up a structure become, you know, overwhelming to the business people, you know. Taxes are paid every year, you know. Is there such a thing, you know, if, if the city is concerned about looks with these containers and if the people would be willing to put up a storage unit or shed or whatever. Is there, is there an abatement program that they could do that without paying taxes?
It, yes, yes, there is. The city can abate its portion of the taxes on a particular parcel for a, a set term.
The city can, but not the county?
No, we would have to go to them separately to ask that question.
I just, I was just thinking that, you know, if there's a program like that, if we want the city to look good, well, let's abate the taxes and let it put up the shed and it'll look good. Or are we looking for money, you know? I don't know, that's, that, again, being a business owner and knowing what it takes to run a business, you know, these people that run the business employ the residents, you know, and it seems like, you know, we can give millions of dollars to Genio because they employ people, but the local business that's been in town for thirty years, no. There's nothing there for you. You can get that out of there. I, I don't understand it, you know, I just don't get it. And yeah, if it looks bad, well, let's try and work with them, you know, instead of putting rules and regulations, it force, to force them to do it. I don't know, that's, that's my opinion.
I concur. What do you guys think?
I agree.
Tony?
Yeah, I, I, there's, there's, I think minimal regulation to keep them on. Is it just industrial? I can't remember. Or does it address commercial also to allow the containers on commercial to have to be screened?
I believe it's both commercial and industrial. It just has to be screened.
Right, so. So if, if I may, I'm trying to hear, trying to listen and also interpret what people are saying is, is the council saying two of the four, or two or three of the four here saying that they would rather not, they would like to, the guidance that you're giving back to the planning commission is to look at being a little bit more flexible? And maybe is that a good, good term to say in regards to allowing these in their unique situations or the other option is just to, just don't even address it through the ordinance process too?
I guess I don't have a problem with the residential part of that. I don't know what you guys feel about the ninety day. But I think the commercial, I mean, I don't know. The people that have the semi-trailers have semis, so they're gonna park a trailer out there and use it for storage. I mean, that's, I don't know, that's the way it's gonna be. I, I don't think somebody that doesn't own a semi has probably got one of these semi-trailers laying around, you know, I mean, then they might be looking at more of the portable storage. Me personally, I think that those storage units some will, I mean, ours always stops down there. They look nice, they match the building, they, I mean, they look better than old semi-trailers. So I mean, other businesses might see that. Maybe move towards that way. Cause they probably don't want to look at that trailer either, you know, on, as themselves, but it's, it's expensive to add on. I mean, pay enough taxes on the commercial side of it, putting it out of your building to get that somewhere. I don't, I'd, I'd be fine with the, the residential part of it, just not the commercial.
This is how it's supposed to work. I mean, the, the council is supposed to hear these things and then if you have issues or concerns, well, this is what we'll share with the planning commission and we'll, we'll massage it until it meets what you guys want, so. So if that's what you're like, that's.
So it would go back to the planning and zoning at this point?
Sure. With these comments, with these comments that have been said.
Are you good with that, Derek?
I'm good with that.
Okay, you guys too? Alright, I am also. So, um, so we are, this is the D, ordinance nine twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, official title and subject.
Yeah, that just gets.
So then he is the, primary thirteen, fifth avenue bridge update.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Administrator Brett Horns, myself, Don Stern from our Golden Valley office met with Dave Cockle, the state bridge engineer, and Patty Loken. Not sure exactly what her title is, but she controls the money, so a very important person. Our, our goal with that meeting was to request that the state consider applying bridge bonds to the channel relocation so that it would take some of the burden off the city. We were directed not to mess with the standard rules because that would open up a big can of worms, I guess, in their opinion. We did bring up the local road improvement grant. Patty Loken administers that grant in addition to other duties. She thought that was an excellent idea and that this project would score very well for receiving a local road improvement grant. The city could apply on their own. It's a city under five thousand population. They would have to apply through the county. That limit for that grant is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If the county applies directly for the grant funding, the limit is a million dollars. Jody Tyke, the Stearns County engineer, has agreed to apply for it on behalf of the city of Melrose, but as a Stearns County grant for the million dollar limit. We did ask the question if we should apply for both and we were directed that if it doesn't meet the first criteria, it could go into the second selection process, so. That's our intention to apply for that. And what would be included that would be that the first street realignment, probably from the fourth avenue to the fifth avenue where we would have to fill in the channel, realign that road. And then the channel relocation costs themselves, so with the million dollars, we believe that the majority of the city cost with that bridge would be covered. So our next step, we're trying to schedule a meeting with the DNR, the fisheries department, the corps of engineers, and then the Sauk River watershed, just to get a, another read on that project. We met with them, I don't know, six, eight, nine months ago. They were reacting favorably, but now that we have more of the hydraulics done and actually some of the modeling for the channel, we want to present that to them and get their feedback, so. With that, Mike, I don't know if there's anything?
Only, only thing that, I think that's great, that's an excellent summary of where we're at. The next step would be, we'll have this staff meeting with all the appropriate environmental people. We'll have, I believe, a, Tony will, will probably attend that as well as a council rep. And then we'll report back here at the next council meeting and what their feelings were. Also at that next council meeting, it's really the, after that, we don't know what else you would need to do to make a decision if, if we were to move forward or not. And so what that means is we would look to WSB to provide us with two quotes at the next council meeting. One is a quote for the EAW, environmental assessment worksheet. And then the other one is the CLOMAR, which is the preliminary paperwork you would need to move the river. And then as well as start the design work on this bridge. And so that's what would come at the next council meeting is those two action items before the council. And by approving those two EAWs and CLOMAR, it's basically saying we're gonna go for this realignment option. So, so we just asked Mike and his team to prepare two quotes for us to reflect that and then to give you a chance to digest the information from this environmental meeting at the next meeting as well as digest what the EAW and the CLOMAR would mean.
I just have a question on that, that grant possibility. I'm assuming we will know a couple of months after that whether or not we?
Yeah, it's due November first. I think she'd said they probably would decide in January, February at the latest, I believe.
So it would be, before we would know whether or not that money is available, we wouldn't have a, you know, obviously we'll get the court stacks meeting, but we won't have a whole lot of money into moving further before we know whether or not that money is available. Is that correct?
Uh, no, I guess, you know, you could make the decision that if you wanted to hold off and starting the EAW until that funding was locked up, you certainly could do that if you chose to, yes.
If, if I could ask a question. Mike, in regards to the timetables, to make this a reality, to meet the timetables for the EAW as well as the various state agencies. Don Stern, who's your bridge, bridge guy, as well as the, one of the original principals from WSB, he made a comment that it's going to be super hard for them to meet the deadlines for even construction in fall of twenty nineteen, did he say?
Correct, yeah.
So for each month that you delay, it's a concern that he has, that he was saying to, can you get a permit?
Yeah, my, my concern was I didn't know how, how deep we would be into funding this before we would know whether or not that grant money is available. Cause if in the back of our heads, we should be thinking about,
Right.
if that grant money doesn't come through, what funds would we plan to, toward this project if we wanted to afford with it? You know, we do have this section here that hasn't been applied. That'd be a one-time deal in case that, that money isn't available.
Well, I think that's something we can work on with staff and have an answer, I guess, hopefully by next month on where that money may come from if the grant money is, is not available. Pass a wall, start up a machine.
Hold on.
So then you just need to take this action item?
Yeah, just to direct, just ask Mike to get those two, two quotes, EAW and CLOMAR.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Alright.
Both, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I'm the new business, propose sidewalk.
Yeah, this is a, a project that we've been talking about for a little while now. The city is looking at a potential of a community pathway as well as looking at its sidewalk plan. And with this, we feel that on County Road sixty-five, with the development of the Genio Turkey project going, being built out there and the number of individuals that are walking to and from work, we feel that a, a side, the parks board as well as staff feel that a bike walking path on the road is probably not the best option anymore. And that's what the current plan calls for. So we are recommending, as well as the parks board is recommending that, that we build a sidewalk all along County Road sixty-five. The county is doing a project next year. The county has stated that they would engineer and coordinate the, the installation of the sidewalk with their, with their cement project that they're doing. The initial cost estimates to do this, it's, it's a pretty big number. It's about seventy-five thousand dollars is our estimate to, to do this work. We in town are unable to do a project of this magnitude. It's just, it's just too much. You're talking seven blocks, I believe, six blocks of sidewalk to do as well as some curving and some driveway work and potentially a little bit of retaining wall. The funds to pay for this, as of right now, are supposed to come out of two different sources. One is the sidewalk budget for next year, twenty-five thousand, and then we also have fifty thousand dollars set in the side for County Road sixty-five that we were originally planning for. However, based upon our understanding of cost shares for a Millen overlay project versus a Seal code project is different. And so therefore we have about fifty thousand dollars in that fund that we can use to fund this. I've already reached out to Centricare Health and their blend program and their foundation to see if there's a potential partnership there that they can provide with us. And the answer is yes. There's an application that we can submit. And we're going to get a lot of points based upon what we're doing here. This is going to be passing by a HUD subsidized apartment complex creates access to and from the hospital and so on, so there's, there's dollars there. Plus, we believe there's a business partner in the community that I think that would be favorable to asking for support with on this project. But we'd want to be smart about when to ask that. So really it's staff's recommendation as well as the parks board recommendation to provide consideration to fund the sidewalk program and also to amend our sidewalk, uh, snow removal program as well, where the city of Melrose would actually maintain the snow off that sidewalks. Public Works, Gary Middendorf, has contacted every single one of the residents, I believe, now, or you missed maybe one?
Everybody.
Yeah, he?
Except for the vacant house.
Okay, now he was able to speak to everybody along there. They're all in favor of it. With one exception, I'm in favor of it as long as I don't have to push a stone or maintain it. So if we were to add this to our master plan for snow removal, they would be in favor of it.
Okay.
And this would be a six-foot wide cement path, pathway. Constructed next year.
The first action I have provided consideration to put in the fund sidewalk program, can I get a motion to approve?
Approve.
Are you excited?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Alright.
Both, motion carried. Then the second action, can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Alright.
Both.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion carried.
Just one quick question. I think Mike considers to put in fund sidewalk.
That, that we're gonna fund it?
So we're moving the other funds out of County Road sixty-five to, alright, just want to be clear of this. Otherwise it just says to fund it, so.
Three informational items, utility commission. Three informational items, utility commission meeting minutes, schools conferences, housing study, small city development program. E is the M60 ink restoration that will be happening this, at the end of this, well, actually this week.
Yeah, it's, I just got an email from a couple of guys. They'll be arriving Saturday morning. They're leaving Wisconsin at about 6:30. They'll be arriving around 10:30. So, and so I just asked them that, they gave us their telephone numbers so we can make sure we got it powered and make sure there's enough pizzas, some food to feed those guys. It's going to go relatively good. Hopefully, we'll get hit with these storms that we're talking about again, but, yeah, it's exciting to see. So, we've asked that if we could make a carload for you and Mike, swing it over and take in some pictures of that, that'd be kind of fun. And if they're also, if those individuals want to watch, I think it'd be a lot of fun.
They'll give me a paintbrush too if you want to. Just kidding. But that'll be good, that'll make it look nice. See if they can bring out like an old military ship anchor or something like that, okay?
Sure, I'll get that anchor for you, Joe.
All right. Say aye. Anything else? Can I get a motion to approve?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Go.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On fair, say aye. Hold, motion carried. Remember, Brady, I always made the motion to adjourn.